Limited routine matters by City Council. I will ask if a citizen or a council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion and at that time either the public or a council member may request that an item be removed prior to the council's vote. The items on tonight's consent agenda include approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of September the 12th, 2017, approval of the expenditure vouchers of September the 26th, 2017, approval of a renewal hotel and restaurant liquor license for Lounge and Lizard, approval of a special events permit for the Cortez Area Chamber of Commerce for business after hours on September the 28th at the 24-hour powerhouse located on Main Street in Cortez. So at this time, is there any item on the consent agenda that anybody would like to set aside? All right. In that case, may I please have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda presented with the extra expenditures, $99,020, $20.33.
Second.
Keel.
Aye.
Archibald.
Aye.
Lucero.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Sheehan.
Aye. We have no presentations this evening at this time. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the council on any items that are not on the agenda? I'll give you a chance when those items come up. That's okay. All right. If there is nobody that wishes to address council at this time, public hearings. The first public hearing is Resolution 19, Series 2017. Niva.
All right. Good evening. I'm here today to present the final plat of the Cedar Street subdivision, amended track B of the Seventh Street minor subdivision. So in the beginning of summer, property owner Alan Simonian applied to the city to subdivide property located at the northwest corner of Cedar and Seventh Street. The area proposed for this subdivision is 16,647 square feet. The property is zoned residential multifamily and is fully developed with two duplexes. The applicant proposes to split the lots into two lots, Lot B1 at 8,100 square feet in size and Lot B2 at 8,500 square feet in size. No new development is proposed for this subdivision. Typically, this proposal would be processed as a minor subdivision, however, it was previously part of a minor subdivision, so it had to go through the full subdivision process. The final plat was recommended for approval by P&amp;Z, by the Planning and Zoning Commission, on September 5th, 2017. The commission recommended that the applicant develop a maintenance agreement for the shared driveway between the properties, however, the driveway is an appropriate size for each lot and staff feels that a maintenance agreement will not be needed per the land use code. So it was not included as a condition in the report. The final plat has been shown to all of the agencies. There were no agency comments for this project. Staff recommends approval of the subdivision.
All right. Counsel, are there any questions?
I have none.
All right. At this time, I'll open it up to public hearing. If there's anybody that would like to speak for or against this resolution, this is your opportunity. Close the public hearing. Are there any other questions from council? This is the final reading on this, isn't this?
Yes.
Okay. It seems like we've been working on this forever.
Yes, it does. But this is it. It's done. It's approved.
All right. May I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for the final plat of the Cedar Street subdivision, amended track B of the Seventh Street minor subdivision as submitted by owner Alan Simonian as outlined in Council Resolution Number 19, Series 2017, with the following condition of approval.
Second. Lucero.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Archibald.
Aye.
Sheehan.
Aye. All right. The next item is Resolution Number 20, Series 2017, approving the preliminary plat of subdivision block four, lot one. Tracy.
Good evening, council. This is a subdivision of a property located in the Monizuma Public Facilities Planned Unit Development area. It is city-owned property. It's located to the northwest of Driscoll and Mildred and it consists of 2.11 acres. It is currently vacant and it's subject to the planned unit development agreement, so it must follow the processes and standards outlined in that document. So again, that's why we're following the full review subdivision is because that document doesn't provide an alternative. It has existing access and utilities and the lots both meet the standards in the land use code and in the PUD agreement. Lot 1A on the east side is one acre and Lot 1B on the west side is 1.11 acre and both lots have access to Driscoll. Lot 1A also fronts Mildred. So one of the conditions of approval was to add a drainage easement to Lot B to allow drainage to flow from Lot 1A to the drainage easement that flows north on Lot 1B and that shouldn't be an issue because there's already a 20-foot utility easement in that same location. And last, regarding cash and lieu, the city can waive cash and lieu for specific reasons, including the goals of the comprehensive plan. And in this case, the city owns the property and it's presumably entered into a contract to allow developer to use the land for economic development. The uses are limited to those found in the PUD agreement and the Comp Plan Chapter on Economic Development covers many goals and policies that relate to the overall goal of economic development in the city and because it's kind of open-ended right now, I just provided all of those goals and policies. So if council does not wish to waive this requirement, then we can remove the condition and the city can pay itself the cash and lieu fee. And so with that, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on September 5th for the preliminary plat and staff recommends approval with the conditions found in the staff report.
Counsel, are there any questions?
I have none.
Okay. Then I will open this up for public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this resolution? Close the public hearing and if there are no other questions, counsel, may I have a motion?
Honorable Mayor, I make a motion to approve the application for the preliminary plat, the subdivision of block four, lot one. Monizuma County Public Facilities, PUD, as submitted by the City of Cortez, is outlined Council Resolution Number 20, Series 2017, with three conditions of approval.
Second.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Archibald.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Lucero.
Aye.
Sheehan.
Aye. All right. Change in premises for KSJD. Mike?
What, um, got another plan here. Basically, what's happened is community radio, public, Community Radio Project KSJD has come back with a new proposal for an outdoor dining area. They are coming off the street right away. They will be on the sidewalk. The parklet concept is no longer there. There's going to be some addition to the sidewalk on the west side of the building on Market Street and they will have an area outside their west door on the Market Street side and an area outside the, I'll be the south door on Main Street. Premises is shown on the maps. And I can be corrected here because I was getting dizzy looking at maps because Jeff did a great job trying to make sure we understood what he was doing. And it appears to me that those two areas are no longer connected, that they just come out the doors and there's no sidewalk connection, excuse me, outside. If you approve this, that's what I say, if this is something different than what I read, please correct me, but we will be asking you also to authorize the mayor to sign the dining agreement and the encroachment permit license to use the sidewalk based on what you approved tonight because I want to make sure we get everything lined up correctly. Staff has looked at this. They've traveled down. They've met with people. It was very interesting to stand on the sidewalk and have people comment to you while we were there. So staff has looked at this and recommends approval of the change in premises. Like I said, it brings it in off the street and back on the sidewalk.
I have two questions.
Sure.
They're not taking away any parking?
No, ma'am. They're going to be totally on the sidewalk. They will not be in the street parking or travel portion.
So none of the parking spots will be affected?
Well, and we do need to address that. So part of this, they've asked the city to do the concrete cost share. So if you go and look, there's a jog right now and they want to basically just make that a straight line and take the jog out. So we've looked at those calculations. I can tell you that the parking spot that is on the far south, that far south one, we should have that striped anyway. It doesn't meet, I mean, people are backing into the crosswalk, right? So that doesn't meet it. We think that we would have the one just north of that, if we extend the sidewalk out, that we would also eliminate for car parking, but we do think that we could stripe that for motorcycles or something else. I don't think we'd necessarily lose the space for parking. It would just be, it wouldn't meet the specs if we extend the sidewalk. So this, the parklet is not proposed to go into those spaces, but by widening the sidewalk there, we would still have the effect. But like I said, I think now that public work staff has measured that and actually goes out and knows, no matter what happens, even if we didn't extend anything, we would no longer stripe that space in. And I'm sorry, I'm trying to, everybody's kind of leaning in. I felt like you guys were coming right at me at light speed. So the farther south one, we wouldn't stripe anyway, no matter what happens because it just doesn't, it doesn't meet, I don't know if it's the...
It's not safe.
Yeah.
That one is not safe. Like Shane said, it backs into the crosswalk and then people turning right, heading north on Market are, they'd be backing right into a blind spot on that. That shouldn't have been marked as it is. The other two spots will go from 20 feet to 18 feet in length and that's not deep, that's not a standardized bay for diagonal parking and we can reallocate that like Shane was saying for motorcycles or...
Phil, could that, would that be deep enough for a compact car?
Oh, yeah.
Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Okay. So basically, you were just losing one parking space and that's going irregardless?
That's going away anyway. We'll not have that restriped next year.
Okay.
And so we could, the only thing is, a lot of times when people see compact car, they treat that as a verb, you know? They're like, "Yeah, I can compact this dolly into the hair," you know, whatever. So, but again, yes, I do think that we could reallocate that space for something, motorcycle, you know? So we wouldn't lose it, but it wouldn't look exactly like it looks now. So I want to make sure council's totally clear on that. And I also want to say that initially, when we went down there, we didn't think that we would lose any and so we communicated that to Jeff and to the world and we said, "Yeah, we don't think we're going to lose any spaces by doing the sidewalk out." But after staff went and pulled some tape, we thought, "Okay, that's not right." So I know Jeff went out and told some people, "This is the plan now and we're not going to lose any parking" and he did that in good faith based on what everybody knew at the time. So it has changed a little bit.
Okay. And then my second question is, is it is still going to have enough walkway that people just walking still can have that access through there or is it going to take away the walkway?
What my understanding is, there will be, because Sam, properly from the building department, went out and that has been his concern and the way he had calculated it, the walkway came first and then the space for the outdoor dining. There's one little, and this is something that I wanted to have so that we were comfortable with it, there's one space of premise that goes from the building out to the outdoor dining area so that there's no alcohol not on premise and that's just going to be an area of premise that people will cross. It's the width of the door and it just allows staff to be able to carry the alcohol.
But again, as far as the walkpath, is it, and we have Jeff here, but Sam, do we have five feet or six feet? How much, what was our minimum room? Yeah, so at no point will it be less than five feet of walking area and the ordinance that council adopted, I think, says four feet, but we're actually at five feet. So it exceeds that standard. It meets ADA and so there will always be walking room in there. And what Mike was talking about is just for the liquor license, they need to be able to take the alcohol across kind of what's not in the premise. So we've got that kind of marked out, but it's going to still be an open area for everybody.
So is the customers going to be able to take their...
Nope.
...alcohol from there back into the theater or to...
Yes, that's the other reason to do it is so that the public, when they're sitting out in the, can walk in through that east or west door and not be out of the premise because if we didn't do that, then yes, they would have to leave their drinks out on the curb and they wouldn't be able to take them back into the building or we'd have to have staff, you know, wait staff. So this allows that movement in and out across the sidewalk. That was the other reason I wanted to do it. I wanted no question that they could walk across back into the building because it would be a licensed premise. I think that's, it creates a lot of issues for the police department, for other staff just with what we'd have to deal with if people were walking around out there in a nonlicensed premise. So that walkway is to make it legal.
So on the sketch 71 that's in there?
Uh, okay.
The sketch on page 71?
Yeah. It shows that people can walk on both sides of that building? Is that what I was looking at?
What?
No.
Those red dots that you got right here says proposed premises. Is that they can walk?
I think, no.
Page 69, I think, is the one that shows what we're licensing tonight. Page 71 was what it is now and it was not as clear and then...
And again, the applicant is here, but I think that the two areas that are shown roped off is what is being requested to be amended with the current application, so...
And Shane, just as a point of clarification, the sidewalk clearance is six feet.
It's six?
Six feet between the premise and the building and then six feet on the, on the Main Street side, there's six feet between that cord and off area and the curb.
Okay, so at no point did we hit five feet? I thought we had.
No, 73 inches at where the stairs are.
Okay.
And then the door on Market is 72. I don't know, it's still six feet on the, on Main Street, is it not?
Yeah, it looks like the page 70 shows you what's on the side and that's showing 71, 72 inches, 73 inches of width and then Main Street when I don't have a diagram quite like page 70.
Okay, so yeah, from just under six feet to slightly over six feet.
Does council have any other questions?
Is there, is there a fence going to be installed on that one side, on the west side, right next to where the parked cars are going to be? I see on page 73, it looks like there's a fence. Is that correct?
It's more of poles and shade structure. I don't know exactly how they're going to delineate the curb side, but I don't think it's a, it may appear to be a fence, but I think it's just a delineator to keep the public and the customers separated.
Are they going to be reinforced so that cars don't...
Well, there's a 10-inch raised curb there and to add another layer of protection, we're going to put concrete stops in those stop bays, just like we did on the other side of Market when we installed the railings. We put stops and markers in so that they hit the stop before their front end hit the structure.
Other questions, council? Jeff, would you like to add some things maybe?
I'm the executive director of KSJD. Thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. I think just one point of clarification, Mike, you asked, we are asking that we don't abandon, on page 71, if you look where it says current premise, okay, that goes and circles the building. Slightly different than what Mr. Green said is we're not asking for just the two, our current premise circles the building and then, you know, would go all the way around from corner to corner. And we are asking to maintain that current premise around the building until you get to the Market Street side and then instead of having the walkway go next to the building, or sorry, instead of having a walkway go close to Market Street and our premise being up on the building, we are moving it west so that the walkway goes through. We are not intending to use that premise up in front. As you can see, it sort of goes all the way around the building, but it's been approved and if we ever did want to come back and let's say up on Main Street, say, "Hey, we'd like to push west six feet because we keep filling that patio up," I'd really like to minimize the number of times that you guys have to listen to this request since it's already approved. So, Mike, does that help clarify it all?
Yeah. It creates a couple of issues on the west side of the building because I'm losing where people walk and go into the travel space.
We won't chain the premise off at all. That's just a, those are just dotted lines around the edge.
But it'd be part of the licensed premise, so could you, I'm sorry, I know you explained it, Jeff, but I'm, I think, more confused after your clarification. So could you, could you explain again?
That happens to me a lot.
Yeah. So...
Already four times today.
So, yeah, so I, I mean, I did understand that you wanted to keep the, the premise on the south side, I thought intact because there's really no change, but on the west side, so you want to keep that entire licensed premise on the border of the building and extend out?
Maybe we just need a very clear map from the project to say what they're going to do because we don't have one that says what Jeff is talking about and that's, I think, problematic here if we're going to do a licensing agreement, if we're going to extend the premise. And so I don't know whether, if council understands what's going to happen here, do we need to table it until we get a correct map? I mean, I'm confused as to what we're...
So I was asked by staff to provide a map that showed any new premise on Market Street. That's what I was asked to do. And I understand if Mr. Green and you take his advice to table this, but the staff asked me to provide a drawing of any new premise on Market Street or a change of premise on Market Street, which I have and you can see that on page 69, which, you can see the dotted line delineates the new box, which is separated from the west wall of the building.
But you still want the, between that space and the building, you want that premise to remain also as far as the liquor license. So there is no walkway there, but it is a part of the premise.
I see what you're saying.
That's the problem I'm having. When you get to the, be the north side of the stairs, if you ended the premise, say, somewhere to the south of the stairs or right at the north end of the stairs, so there was a walkway into the non-premise on the west side of the building, that makes more sense, but if we link the...
Because then you, otherwise you could put tables all the way from the curb to the building.
Okay.
And there's no, there's no sidewalk anymore.
Yeah, that's the reason I brought up that 71 because that sketch, that makes sense to me.
And I didn't think that was the proposal, the way I understood it.
Yeah, I know. Well, I read on 69, proposed...
Very good. Then I withdraw the request or the supposed clarification and go back to what Mr. Green presented originally and we'll stick with the two areas that seem clear to councils.
So that's the proposed premise on number, on page 69 and so you would be, basically be abandoning the previous approval and then replacing it with the proposed premise on 69, which shows a roped off area on Main Street as well as, I guess, just pushing on Market Street to the west. Okay.
Well, we're not approving anything that's on Main Street because that's already there, right?
Ma'am, what we're doing is we're getting rid of the connection between the two doors that was premise, so all you're going to have is a premise on Main Street in front of the door on Main Street for the theater. You're going to have another premise outside the door on the west side, that door that's in the back to the north, and there's no premise in between those two.
Yeah, so, Mayor, you're right that we've already approved, kind of what he's asked for on Main Street.
Right.
But it is going to be minimized some. It will be changed, so council will be approving this new configuration that would just, it would be removing some of the areas that had previously been allowed. And did you have anything to add? When is that?
I did, I did want to say, I have spoke to Jeff and we did talk about page 71 where he shows the picture that you guys are all seeing with the dots. And his reasoning for why he wanted to keep this was someday if they extend out there, but that's a someday. And we talked about him coming back and having to do it over again. So, you know, I know that's what he's telling you guys, he's trying to keep it, just simple. But I, when you guys talk about how are they going to do the pedestrian against that wall coming out on there, it does seem a little unclear. So I think we all understand what the question is.
And I'd say to you, Jeff, I just think that, you know, for council to consider this, really approve this, I think that we need to be clear with what's going on and so I just think it leaves a little bit of confusion as far as, okay, well, what's being approved and what's going on here and can people carry beer from here to here and, you know? And besides, whenever you come to ask for change of premise, you get to interact with your local government, which is, you know, should be fun for you. And that's why everybody else is here.
It's obvious I'm having fun, right?
I have one more question as well. Why do we have to have it on the edge of the roadway instead of on the edge of the building? So why can't they just put it on the building and leave the walkway by the parking spaces open for pedestrians?
Well, that's a question for the applicant.
A great question. So as we brought an architect in to evaluate this space that we're trying to create, two things occurred to us. One, when we want to use this space would be just before a show at intermission and just after a show. You have probably noticed that it can be really hot in Cortez at 4:00. In that particular time of the day, 4, 5, 6 o'clock in the summertime and even in the shoulder seasons, that sandstone heats up to well over 100 degrees and maybe 150 degrees. So if we have put people standing there very close to the building, it's just really uncomfortable. And so we thought, could we make it a more comfortable space by moving it out slightly, allow the walkway to come through? And when I came to the workshop a while ago, one of the, you know, the example was brought up, well, they're doing this in other places such as Grand Junction, maybe we could do it. Council looked into it and taken a shot to try that. So it's really about comfort for our patrons when they're outside and creating a space that maybe doesn't feel so punched up against the wall as well.
But I just think, you got to think about the pedestrians and the comfort level of the pedestrians walking that area too. And when you got people going in and out of here with drinks and you got your little kids trying to get through that area, it's very uncomfortable to the pedestrians as well. So I don't think it's, it may be friendly for your customers, but for just a pedestrian walking that Main Street, I think it's going to be very uncomfortable.
Right. And one of the things I think that's important to think about is we have, oh, 50 events a year, so that leaves a lot of time when this space, we think it will be open. We think people will come sit there. We think they'll come grab their ice cream. We'll be taking the chains down when we're not using it. We see it as a semi-public space with people, what, public meaning maintained by us, but people will alight and find a shady spot that's really comfortable. On the evenings, when we use it, and all of our shows are in the evening, there's going to be a lot fewer children out. My kids are a bad example. We usually have them in bed by eight, a lot of kids stay up later, but in any case, we think that... later, but in any case, we think that the overall benefit of creating a really nice space, it doesn't overheat and it's a nice place to be, no matter whether we're having a venue or not, may outweigh your concerns, Counselor.
Thank you.
Can I provide a little context for the council about this request? In two thousand nine, KSJD bought this building at the corner of Main and Market, which was quite literally falling down. And we had been lucky enough to be able to invest over a million dollars into the Montezuma Valley National Bank Building, which is the only historic structure that's been rehabbed on the state register in the city of Cortez. And it's really a beacon. This year, we were recognized by, in a statewide award by the Colorado Preservation, Inc. We were invited to conferences to talk about historic preservation. And if you can remember what that corner looked like before and what it looks like now, it's really different. And I say all this because of the context of what we're doing and we're asking council tonight. This is not a willy-nilly request for something that we think is just nibbling on the edges of downtown economic development. Not only have we invested a million dollars and given that building another hundred years of life, more than four thousand people have come to the Sunflower Theater in the last year, and seventy-five percent of our patrons dine out. And at an average ticket price of thirty dollars a person, that's a ninety thousand dollar impact in downtown economic development because of the Sunflower Theater. Quite literally, we have had businesses move in next door, you can talk to Brent and he'll tell you, we moved to the, next to the Sunflower Theater with Moose and Moore only because we knew there would be traffic there. And we're proud to be part of the downtown economic development scene. These proposals that are in front of council are so that we can bring more people downtown, so they might linger just a little bit longer, so that other people will see things that are happening downtown, that we create more and more activity and be part of our ever more vibrant downtown Cortez. That's the context in which my organization comes to you tonight. And I hope you think it is, think of it as important as we do because we're never going to give up on Cortez. I think it's a great place to be.
I, I'd like to compliment you too, Jeff, in the sense that, you know, when you, when you came back several weeks ago with the parkland idea and there was some concern about moving in that direction, that you took that into consideration and came up with something else that would meet your needs.
Absolutely. We've done a hundred and eighty degree turn from when I was here last time. Downtown business people came to me and said, Jeff, I'm concerned that we're going to be out, you're going to be out of the street, you're going to be taking part of parking and that this could be a detriment. And so I went back to council or went back to city staff and said, look, could we do a compromise? Could we do something else that we could still move forward with our plans on economic development, but shows that we are listening to our partners in downtown Cortez and in the area? And I feel like tonight's presentation and tonight's proposal has that deeply at the center of what we're asking.
Jeff, what time are most of your shows at in the evening?
Our shows are between seven and eight P.M. Thank you.
Just before you say, back to what we were talking about as far as the current premise and the proposed premise, would it still wrap the building?
No, I think I'm withdrawing that confusion from the question.
So if you'd be on Main Street, you have that space there that has a, the chains?
Yes.
And then it starts up again over where the chain thing is.
Yeah, and Councilman Miller, if you look on page sixty-nine of your packet, that's what I think the proposal is.
Yeah, sixty-nine doesn't show Main Street. And he's saying that he wants to keep the part that has the, on page seventy-one, there's a part there with the chain running through the door.
I think that's what he's saying, he withdrew.
I'm withdrawing page seventy-one. Rip it from your packet.
Okay, good.
Jim, this will be here.
It's there, it's there now.
Do you look on sixty-nine?
Yeah, if I still had a planner here, I'd put it up on the flash screen for everybody. It's beyond, it's beyond my capabilities.
So that will still be...
That's there. And, and in fact, if you'll, if you guys are downtown, if you'll take a minute, how soon do you think you'll have those painted?
Uh, Friday.
He's, he's already got, he's already got the posts in place in the front of the Sunflower Theater and they should be finishing up with the painting so that it will be a completely finished project. And so take a look the next time you drive down Main Street at how that looks, that kind of...
So he started construction with that being approved, huh?
No, this had already been approved.
He, he had, he has an approved premise. And so that's kind of the, what's shown on seventy-one, that he has a current approved premise, so this is to change his premise. But what he's doing on Main Street is basically it would, if council approves it or if you didn't approve it, he kept his old one, either way, he'd be in compliance.
The only new stuff is on Market Street outside the west door on the west curb.
Good. I like sixty-nine. Eight sixty-nine shows, I think we're trying to do...
And, and I think, I know when I was looking at it, I can't figure out for sure what page it's on, but it's the, it's the artist concept where you see the side of the building and then a shady area with trees. That's just a concept, that's, that's not what we're looking at for this particular structure. It's just, because this almost shows the trees as being in the middle of the street, which obviously they're not, so, so that was a little bit confusing, I thought at the, initially.
So you might need to change the motion that suggested to limit it to page?
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine. And add authorizing the mayor to sign the dining agreement and encroachment permit, please.
All right. Any other questions, Council?
No.
All right. At this point, I'm going to open it up to a public hearing. If there is anybody that would like to speak for or against this project, this is your chance. Would you state your name and address, please?
My name is Lana Waters and I live at one six four one five County Road twenty-one point four. And I was clearly opposed against the parkland the way it was before with the people in the street. Drinking up on the sidewalk is not, to me, as, quite as dangerous because at least you do have that curb there, so I am a little bit happier with that. However, I still have a lot of concerns. So this new sidewalk that you're going to pour with this new curb out here, whose property is that?
It's...
City.
It's the city. It's, but it's his premises, right? So his liquor license, his premise is going to change?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's the current agreement with councils to use the city's premise, so the, the current license that he has on the city sidewalk is, is the same construct.
So how does that come into conflict with the school?
With the school?
With the school that's less than two hundred and fifty feet away.
It doesn't come into conflict, he already has grandfathered in with his premise.
But it's changing his premise.
I don't think it's an issue for him. It wasn't an issue when he got his dining agreement in the first place, which was approved.
But here and again, we don't think, we don't think, and we don't think that this is going to be a problem. We don't, we have a problem with some of the maps here. I just see a lot of unknowns here. And when he came to speak to the businesses about his proposal, it was said that he would have no change to parking whatsoever. And now, now we're hearing he's taking one away, we're not sure what he's doing with the second one. To me, there's a lot of unanswered questions and I feel like, at this point, we need some more information. I walked up and down Main Street today. What, what is out there feels really uncomfortable to me. You're walking and then all of a sudden you have to do a big jog, you know? And I have one really big concern and I think this needs to be tabled. The public notice was not published in the paper correctly. And I do believe that on that note alone, this needs to be tabled. It said this would, meeting would take place on September two thousand seventeen. There was no September twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen in it as well.
I'm looking at what's on the thing.
The notice on the building is for the twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
The note on the building does say the twenty-sixth. The publication in the newspaper does not have the twenty-sixth on it. And whether that's the journal's...
If that's correct, we do need to table that. I do not have the public hearing in front of me, the notice in the paper. So I will have to go pull that in my office. So the public hearing notice, you don't have it in the packet?
No, it's not in the packet. We just have a picture of what's on the building.
Okay.
And I would also like for Mr. Pope to make it very, very clear to all of his neighbors who he is going to impact with the parking, because when he came in, he said no parking would be affected. And I would like for him to make that clear once again to all the businesses that will be affected. We drove down Market Street as, as we were headed to city council tonight. Lounging Lizard was not open and there were two parking spots open. And that's with one of our busy restaurants being closed tonight. So those parking spots are being used, spaces are being, I mean, it's heavily congested down there all the time. And I'm sorry, we're just a lazy population anymore. We're not going to walk very far to go patronize businesses that support this community. And I think parking space is a real need. And I know the next ordinance or resolution that you have coming before you is over parking again, parking wars. So I, I ask that you table it so that we can get some more information.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we were going, there's one parking spot that was going to be lost and that was going to be lost anyway based on what was decided.
But that is, isn't that, so are you going to lose a parking spot on every block? Because that's how Chestnut is too, as well as across the street.
Well, I can't speak to that, but I do know that this parking spot was going to be gone because of, of a safety issue anyway.
But you have that safety issue on every block.
We have talked about Chestnut as well, that has come up. So possibly, you know, that is possible.
So this is opening up, opening up a whole new can of worms. You're losing parking all over. And I know in Durango, they fight tooth and nail for their parking. And in Cortez, we're just going to give it away?
Well, well, that, that's different. If we find an unsafe condition, I, I can't ethically say, okay, I know it's unsafe and I know somebody could back into pedestrian in a, in a crosswalk. I mean, we have eight hundred and thirty-eight parking spots in the central business district. And so if we have to sacrifice a couple for public safety, I don't, I don't have any qualms about that. I, I know parking is...
Okay, I, I don't, I agree with you. I agree, public safety is number one. But number two is, should be, our economic development.
Sure.
And we are taking parking spaces away from for-profit businesses that are struggling to survive. It's hard to do business in Cortez as it is. So...
Okay, well, again, but I think the first base, though, the, the one that's closest, no matter what is decided, I mean, we...
Then I think you need to go back through and then take all those other unsafe ones out as well.
So is that what you're suggesting we do, is take the other unsafe ones out?
No, it's not what I'm suggesting that you do. I'm suggesting that's a whole can of worms that's been opened now. And so I think there's a lot of, there's not much clarity here at all for me.
If I could speak to that issue of the safety of that parking spot, this proposal isn't what opened that can of worms. We just went through the corridor-wide safety study with C.D.O. and a third-party contractor that brought these things to light. And we're going to be addressing parking in the city and, and we are going to be revising parking based on the safety standards that have been, you know, we brought in fresh set of eyes to look at existing conditions and we're going to be addressing those and reacting to them. So although this may appear that this proposal brought us light, it isn't. And we're going to be doing this on other streets in the city. So there will, there will be other parking spaces affected, yes.
Yeah.
And so the clerk just looked it up, the date isn't there, Ms. Waters is correct, it just says September. And so it wasn't properly noted, so we really do need to table it.
And that's my mistake.
I have a little question. If we're going to stop, I would like to ask, Bill...
You need to state your name.
My name is Dave Waters. I live at sixteen four fifteen County Road twenty-one point four. My wife and I own thirty-four East Main and forty East Main on this same block. And just one comment, that when you continue to take parking away from it, I also own a historical building that I don't feel like I can afford to restore and use because there's not enough parking for it. But my question to Phil is, is there any way that those parking lot, or those parking spots can be painted the opposite way so that people don't have to back out into the crosswalk, they're backing out into Market Street like the other side? And we don't have to lose that first spot.
So you're talking about nosing in, heading south?
Yes.
That would go against, no, that would be going against the flow of traffic. And we even look, David, potentially trying to see if we could replace those with parallel parking, but with the conflict of the angle parking to the north, there wouldn't be a, you know, a safe way to egress out of that.
So you couldn't come down Market Street and angle in?
And then park on the opposite side, nosing in, heading south?
Or, yeah, I guess so.
But, but we have talked about, David, you know, about if, if we ever lose a spot, can we, you know, compact, can we do motorcycle parking, can we do something to still preserve that and just not put a big truck into it? And we are having those conversations and we...
But I would like a straight answer because this seems like politics to me. Okay, the first parking spot is gone because it's unsafe.
Right.
Okay, fine, we have to do that. There's two other parking spots there that are not going to be used except for possibly for motorcycles, which is a very small portion of the traffic.
Well, I think we mentioned compact too, didn't you? Didn't you say compact would fit in there as well?
Yes. But then it's a, you know, it's like Shane says, it's, you know, someone sees an open spot, a duly truck that sees a parking spot, they're going to...
Then it becomes a safety issue again, and then those two parking spots are gone too. So we're looking at, we are realistically looking at losing three more parking spots. We lost three on Beach Street a couple of years ago when city council let Kiva School go away. So we've lost six parking lots, it looks like we're going to lose six parking spots on one block with nine businesses on it. I just built a building in the industrial park that has one employee. I had to have ten parking spots for that one business in the industrial park. Why is it so important in the industrial park and not on Main Street? So, I mean, I have, I have more, but if you're going to table it, I'm fine with that, I'll wait.
How many parking spots do we have in the downtown area, Shane?
The, the central business district has eight hundred and thirty-eight spaces. That includes the overflow parking lot.
How far back, honey? The overflow parking lot does not help us on Market Street.
Okay, but they, I'm answering the mayor's question. So, in the central business district, we have eight hundred and thirty-eight spaces, that includes the overflow parking lot.
And that sounds really well. How many do you have on Market Street between Market and Beach for nine businesses?
I, I don't have that number for you.
I can tell you have eleven.
Well, but Dave, too, if you go, if you go to Durango, for example, I was over there the other day, and, you know, they've got many more businesses downtown than, than we do and their parking...
And their parking garages?
Their parking is, their parking on Main Street is limited and so there are times when I have to park, you know, on, on, on some of their, their larger parking areas that are, that are off Main Street. And, and I do it.
Is that a good rule to make it like that, though?
Well, but, but I'm, it's kind of...
Because a few people want to sip wine on Main Street? That's what this comes down to, a few people want to sip wine on Main Street. So you're overlooking the greater good of the businesses that pay the taxes, that support the city, so that a few people can sip... the city, so that a few people can sip wine on Main Street part of, part of the time. Actually, the previous plan that they had was much better than this because it was temporary. This is permanent. Why, I hear all of this talk about how the city council is pro-business and so helpful to businesses, and I totally believe that. Unfortunately, it's just a few businesses. It's not across the board. And this is a perfect example.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Are you going to table it, or can I really bring that up?
Well, did somebody else have something to say? You've, you've had your three minutes. Next.
There's, and one thing that came up, we talked about schools. When you look at the city code, we have an ordinance 930 which eliminated the distance from schools on the north side of Main Street as I read it. I think that's still in effect. So that's, that's what happened to the school distances there.
What's the new brew pub? Why did they have that problem?
Pardon?
Why has Mitchell Thompson told he can't have that?
I wasn't aware he'd been told.
The, the brew pub didn't have a problem. They, they've made the distance, they just made it by about a few feet.
In my reading of the liquor laws, they need 500 feet, and they're changing premises, and they have to go through the process again, or this is totally illegal for the state licensing for their liquor license.
Well, and Dave, I'm sorry, but this is, it's a dual license, so the city, i- if council approved it, the state would also approve that license.
But you're breaking the rule.
Well-
Is there anxiety in your premise?
Sir, the, the, the only liquor license premise in this room is this lady right here. She, she's the biggest expert. Uh, they, they have gone through a change before. Okay, well, all right.
If, if you could state your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Richard Markham. I live at 14680 Road 18. And first comment I want to make is, this is not Durango. Anything Durango did really shouldn't have any effect on what we do here, all right? Mr. Hale, uh, you'll give up a couple of parking spaces here, there. You have no qualms on that. People that use these parking spots do have qualms. We really have a hard time shopping in Durango. Parking is a major problem. Going back a little bit further, with this median project that you all have going down Main Street, I have no qualms about what's going on in front of McDonald's. There's no parking there along the streets, or at least not very many people park along there. But in downtown Cortez, parking is a major problem. If you're going to narrow the streets with this disastrous median thing that you're planning on doing, you're going to squeeze more people into the parking areas. It's going to be dangerous. You're not only going to cut out parking spots, you're going to make it a hazard.
Sir, I, I don't think we're, the, the issue at hand is not the medians. The issue at hand is, is simply this section on Market Street.
In the journal, parking is not going to be changed, period. That's all they said. Didn't give any other information on where they're going to change, if they're going to change, or not going to change. The council here is very, very lax at letting the public know what you're doing. On Market Street, there's a lot going on on Market Street. On that intersection on the corner, there's a lot going on. I have never been able to park within three blocks of that area. Maybe it's the time of day I go there, maybe it's not, I don't know. But I know it is a problem. Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, then, I think we need a motion to, do we need a motion to table this?
We do.
Okay, can I, if there are no other questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry.
You can close the public hearing.
Is there anybody else that would like to, to speak at this time? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing. And are there any other comments that I need a motion to table this?
I make a motion to table, uh, the approval of the change of premises for Community Radio Project at this time.
Second.
Carlson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Archibek?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Chee?
Aye.
We will re-advertise that and get your sign changed, Jeff. If you could bring that by tomorrow, that'd be great. Thank you.
So this will be brought up then at the next council meeting, the first council meeting in, in October?
Yes, it requires 10 days posting.
Okay, okay, so we'll be good. All right. The next item is ordinance number 2030, series 2017. It has to do with recreational vehicles and parked trailers. Mike?
Um, this ordinance was to correct a mistake. Um, there is the word "or" in the existing ordinance. Um, the way it's written right now, you can't park an RV anywhere in the city of Cortez on the public right of it. Um, this was intended originally to keep people from living in RVs parked on the street, so the word "and" should have been inserted in there instead of the word "or." It's a simple correction. In somewhat of a response to some of the comments we received before, I think it, it would be my recommendation, if we were to ban parking of large vehicles, we would need to do quite the field work. In other words, we would have to get definitions, we would have to be much more, um, it'd be, it's more than just RVs. And this ordinance was not really designed to do anything but keep people from living in the street rather than just parking. And so staff recommends approval after the public hearing.
All right, council, are there any council members that have a question on this?
I was going to say, so the change of the wording, they can park on the street.
Right. So in other words, it's not parking or living, it's parking and living is what's illegal. Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment as far as the change in the "or" to "and" makes the law make more sense, but even the way the law is set up, if, if what we want to do is keep people from hooking up to the sewer, I think we should say they can't hook up to the sewer when they're parked on, on the street.
That, that wasn't the purpose, because at the time, we simply had people parking in the street. They weren't hooked up to anything, they were living there, they had lawn chairs out and things. And so we were trying to keep things safe. It's not designed for connections, it's not designed about services. It was designed to make sure people were living in safe places and not out on the street where a car could collide with the RV or things like that.
But I still, I still have trouble with telling people they can't sleep in their RV when it's parked on the street in, in the town. But if, if that's what it is, you know, you can't sleep in your car, you can't sleep anywhere out there, I want the police department to be out there enforcing it. I don't want laws that we put on the books that we don't enforce unless some neighbor calls up and says, hey, somebody's sleeping over there. Because now you've given the authority to that neighbor that doesn't want somebody to sleep out there, the authority to call the police and have them come move it. But the police, I mean, if we have a law that says you can't sleep in your car, I want the city manager to tell the, the chief to enforce it. I don't want people sleeping, I don't, I don't like having laws on the books that we don't enforce. The very next law says that you have to have, uh, license plates on your bicycles. I don't like that law.
And sir, this is only to deal with RV vehicles? It doesn't deal with cars?
Parked trailers and our recreational vehicles?
Right. And I understand-
Where are you coming from, sir?
And, and I, I think the police are enforcing this, and we do get complaints from neighbors as well, but it's, you know, i- if a patrolman is going by and, and sus- suspects somebody who's living in their trailer, I, as far as I know, chief, we're, we are enforcing that.
When you say "living," are you saying sleeping in their trailer?
Yes, if it's on the street.
If it's on the street, they can't sleep in their trailer? And the police department is going around investigating this? I think there's a lot better things that they could be doing.
Tim, they can't spend 30, they, they can't spend more than 30-
That doesn't say that in this ordinance.
I, I think it does say 30 days.
Not for parking on the street, ma'am. They cannot park on the street and have-
Oh, that's right. And they, and they cannot be in their, live in their trailer for-
Shaping it.
Well, live in it, sleep in it.
People come to my house sometimes and they, they pull up and they got a nice motorhome, they're going through town, and they sleep in their camper. And I really don't see any issue. I don't know why we even have this law. But I don't, I understand it. What we're doing tonight is we're changing "and" to "or" to fix this law because it doesn't make sense the way it's written. I'm, I'm going to probably vote yes on that. But I really don't like having ordinances that we don't enforce, and I don't like having ordinances that don't make any sense.
I, I think we do have, Sam, don't the compliance, the compliance officers, that's part of what they do too, when they, when they go around, uh, you know, if somebody's got weeds or whatever in their yard, one of the things that they also look for is, is these kinds of things as well. So they're, they're, they're not a police officer, but they do have the authority to be able to-
I don't want Sam telling my people that they can't sleep in their car either. I think Sam's got better things to do than to run around making sure nobody's sleeping in their motorhome.
We get several complaints a year from neighbors, uh, of generators running, uh, they can't sleep, the noise, from people using their campers. But most of it is complaint-driven. We don't ru- drive around at night and say, uh, there's a light on in this trailer, and there's a light on in this trailer. They're complaint-driven. Uh, most of them are complaint-driven, and Sam, between Sam's department and mine, we, we try to handle those.
That's all I have, sir.
Okay, are there, are there any other questions or comments? All right, may I have a motion?
Your, your, it's a public hearing.
No, I'm sorry. At this time, let me open this up to a public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against this? Okay. I'm closing the public hearing, and now may I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve on final reading, ordinance, ordinance, I can't even say ordinance. So maybe I shouldn't make this motion. Um, ordinance number 1230, series 2017 prohibiting the occupation of recreational vehicles or parked trailers on private property in city, city property, amended ordinance number 1179, series 2013.
Second.
Miller?
Aye.
Archibek?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Chee?
Aye.
All right, we are finished with the hearings. Now, we have no unfinished business, and we'll move on to new business. Resolution 14, series 2017, approving two-hour parking on Beach Street. Phil?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, I bring to your, for your consideration tonight, the resolution for two-hour parking on Beach Street. This would deal with, uh, from Main Street South just to the alley, approximately 13 on-street pla- uh, spaces, four on the west and nine on the east. Some background, this is the owner of Shiloh's Steakhouse. Mr. Mark Rogers requested that this designation, um, be, you know, imposed on Beach Street due to the increased traffic in on-street parking with the development of Beacon Livwell, the marijuana shop to his east. In speaking with, uh, the chief and looking at the existing ordinances for, uh, limiting parking in the central business district, this would only be, uh, for the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM Monday through Friday, because that's when enforcement is available. And, um, we, I have spoke with the owners of both, well, the owner of Shiloh's and the manager of, of Beacon to let them know that, um, you know, this was on the table and that we had discussed this at a previous workshop. So, uh, both parties are aware. Public Works recommends that we do, in fact, uh, do this parking restriction from Main Street South to the alley on both sides of the street, uh, being designated as two-hour parking from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM Monday through Friday, uh, for the enforcement hours. And if council agrees with staff, council can make a motion to approve Resolution Number 14, series 2017, authorizing two-hour parking on Beach Street from Main Street South to the alley.
Are there any questions?
I don't have any. Ma'am?
All right, in that case, may I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 14, series 2017, approve two-hour parking on Beach Street.
Last second.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Archibek?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Chee?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, 2017, um, US 160 Cortez Gateway Monument Project bid. Phil?
Yes, ma'am. Well, this is a, a very happy bid for everyone in this room, sir, having to do with moving forward, finally building some gateways. As you're all aware, this started with the Heart and Soul Project several years ago, uh, when the city of Cortez adopted a master certification plan to enhance the aesthetic qualities and landscape within the city of Cortez. Um, this started in 2013 with engagement planning, Russell Planning and Engineering and DHM Design. And the city has since obtained two parcels of property, or in the process of planning a second one, a one on South Broadway at the old Fire Department Practice House, and then on North Broadway at the intersection of Empire, uh, working out a land deal with the owner of Bill Tietzel.
And so that'll be on the next council agenda. We'll be, um, authorizing the mayor to sign that purchase agreement for Mr. Tietzel.
So, um, utilizing the approved conceptual drawings, uh, Public Works Engineering Division put together a project packet, and we opened bids 2:00 PM on September 20th, and we received two bids, one from Stone Paver Company in the amount of $43,900, and Magnum Construction in the amount of $57,920. I included with the Stone Pavers Company bid, our pictures of some of the work done at the Mesa Verde Visitor Center, and, um, Public Works recommends awarding the bid to Jeff Estes, Estes with the Stone Paver Company. If council agrees with staff's recommendation, council can make a motion to award the bid for the 2017 Gateway Monument Project to the Stone Paver Company at a bid price of
All right, are there any questions, council?
The, the one we're looking at is the, this right here, this design?
Well, no, uh, but if you refer to page 87, um, that's got the gateway signed design. I, I think that page 88 is just, um, the company showed us some of their work.
Some of their work, some of their stonework.
So this is just, um, I think more, yeah, more conceptual on, on, on their stonework. As you guys know, a, a good mason can, you know, you don't notice their work, and a bad mason, that's all you see. So he just showed some, um, some of his work. And so, so council knows it's really just the sign. Um, we, we will have, um, the Parks Department either come in this fall or spring, depending on the timing, when we're done, um, and do the plantings. And then, um, we're going to turn, turn over kind of the, um, Indian pot idea to the Arts and Murals Committee. So, and Phil was ecstatic when I, when I told him that. So, um, so anyway, so it'll just be the sign. And then, um, we're going to actually have this in two parts. That this bid is for the monument, and then we've got some, um, prices from Reflections of Metal for the actual sign part itself, because we have some custom pieces like the lizard and the wagon wheel. So-
The, the pot, is there an estimated time when, when, when the entire, um, monument will be complete?
No, there, there is not. And I do wonder, um, you, especially on the South Broadway side, I think with the elevations and that wall there, I don't know that a pot would be visible anyway, so I'm not sure if it's going to- if it's gonna end up in that final piece. I mean, I think it'd be visible if we have a fallout area and people can get out and see it, but it wouldn't necessarily be visible from the highway, but-
Is it, is the plan to have it facing almost due north, or have it facing more out towards both?
Which side?
The north and south traffic?
No, it's really just for oncoming traffic. It's just really to catch that oncoming-
Which is the northern traffic?
Is there coming in from the south?
Yes, they're coming in from the south, yes. And so, and we've looked at, right now, we've been looking at from engineering staffs, kind of angling it in. I think there's gonna, they're gonna true that up on-site and really, you know, see, we wanna get it far enough away from the retaining wall to have room to do all of our plantings, you know, make sure we have enough room to do work back there, but, you know, but still give ourselves a good line of sight from oncoming traffic.
Okay.
And we did discuss it one time, trying to put these to where we could put maybe something on the back as well, you know, things come again, but it just-
Mydeos.
Yeah. It made it complicated and it didn't really work, and I think we're sacrificing for oncoming traffic to get something coming in, or really increasing our costs to build the sign for what seemed like a little bit of impact.
I really hope, I mean, I think what the HCM came up with on this particular sign is really nice, so I hope we don't compromise to the point that what we have is something less than what we could have.
The only thing you gotta watch is all the trees and make sure they don't grow and cover the signs.
Block the sign, right, yeah. There'll be, I think that in front and on the side, right, then the city will be like, you know, anybody else, we're blocking our sign. No, that is, I think a lot of the plantings would be on the side or behind, so I think it'll kind of help frame it in and give it a nice backdrop, but, yeah.
When they submitted this proposal, did they specify plant materials, or this is just an artist's conception of what they think it should look like?
They didn't get into the specifics like they did South Broadway. This was just a conceptual, but I have every confidence that Mark's group and Sandy will do a stellar job in planning this.
All right, are there any other questions?
I have none.
All right, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to award the 2017 U.S. 160 Cortez Gateway Monument Project bid to the Stone and Paver Company at the bid price of forty-three thousand nine hundred dollars.
Second.
Keel.
Aye.
Lucero.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Archibek.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Shee.
Aye.
Thank you.
How soon do you think they're gonna start on this? Are they-
Well, we'll issue the notice of-
Are we talking Monday?
And then they have two weeks to get their bids, their bonds and insurances in place, and then we'll do a notice to proceed. So, I would think-
Oh, no, we're pushing this, Paul.
Mid-October. We should be breaking ground.
Good, all right. All right, Rick, the fiber expansion change order.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Earlier this year, the city completed segment number one of the fiber expansion DOL grant. The first segment was built from the city service center clear to Empire Street. This project change order request includes routes two through seven out of the possible ten. DAC drilling, as you might recall, was awarded the original contract, and that contract is still open, and this change order would be an extension of that original contract. DAC drilling performed both underground and the aerial construction on segment one, and that'll be the case on these routes. The city provides all the materials for the construction, the fiber, the handholds, and splice cases, et cetera. We also had to do a lot of the engineering. Segments two through seven, just kind of jumping through here, total cost of the change order, three hundred and forty thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars sixty cents. It's estimated that the city's material costs would be about another one hundred thousand for that. So, that would bring the DAC contract for construction to four hundred and ninety-five thousand four twenty-one ninety, and DAC did a great job on segment number one.
All right, council, any questions?
I don't have any.
I have none. Thank you.
Find a way to put the cost, Jake.
It's nice to see us move forward on this. All right, may I have a motion, please?
Honorable Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve change order number one to DAC drilling in the amount of three hundred and forty thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty cents, and approve the city manager's signing the change order.
Second.
Lucero.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Archibek.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Shee.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy?
Yes. Ordinance number twelve thirty-one, series 2017, changing the sales and use tax code. Good evening. In 2014, the Colorado General Assembly adopted Joint Resolution Number 14038, which strongly urged CML to work with home rule municipalities and the state to develop uniform definitions within our tax codes. The last time this was done was in nineteen ninety-two, and since that time, storefronts have changed, and we have the addition of worldwide shopping right at our hands. CML spearheaded this project with representatives from each Colorado home rule municipality that locally collect sales tax. Colorado is one of the few states that have home rule, well, that's hard to say, home rule municipalities which decide what to tax exempt and what to tax. If you throw in multi-jurisdictional areas that out-of-town vendors who don't have a nexus or a place of business within the tax jurisdiction, you throw that into it, and it becomes very cumbersome, costly, and time-consuming to make the effort to collect and remit taxes to each home rule municipality. Just for council's information and for the public's, our out-of-town vendors who collect sales tax, they don't have to, a lot of them we sign agreements with that say, "We agree to do this," but it doesn't mean that we are required or legally obligated to do so. We collected nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, or nine and a half percent of our total sales collection, total sales collections from these out-of-town vendors. So, to make it easier for them, we've at least adopted all the same definitions. So, a definition of, and this is really simple, a car is the same throughout, a definition of-
Candy and prescription drugs and-
Yes, any of those. It's, they're about, it does not change our local tax rates or anything like that. In fact, I went through the whole process with this committee via emails and things, and I looked at our tax definitions and the ones that the committee came up with, and those would in no way affect us negatively or positively as far as our taxes goes. It just would make it easier for out-of-state vendors to remit and collect sales tax on our behalf. I did, I did find it interesting. I didn't think it was that high that they do, but nine and a half percent or almost a million dollars is a lot of-
Well, and part of this too, is, you know, even for people that are brick and mortar, I mean, if you take like a Safeway or a Walmart or somebody, if they're operating in two-hundred-and-fifty jurisdictions in Colorado, how we define taxing really does matter to them as well. And so, I think that CML is really encouraging everybody to be proactive and really encouraging cities to adopt this model, because if not, you know, they fear that the legislature's gonna get pressure saying, "Look, your tax system is too complex in Colorado," you know, and then we're gonna get legislation from the Gold Dome, which is almost certainly not gonna be beneficial to Cortez or any other municipality. So, anyway-
I think the state legislature would do the opposite, though. They would get a hold of that information and really push for some type of legislation that would want it to be uniform across the state.
Well, they could, but it, it's just because we self-collect, I think that's part of the difference too. It's not just the home rule, it's the fact that in a lot of states, the state collects and remits, and so for a lot of retailers, this is a more complex way to do business. So, we just wanna make sure that the push for the state to simplify doesn't harm our revenue base, and it's pretty straightforward, I think, for the city to adopt this. It's been really vetted, you know, Kathy and her work, and a lot of finance directors and other folks in the state have worked on this. So, I think it's a neutral impact to the city that could kind of hurt us if all the municipalities don't do this.
All right, any questions?
I don't have any.
Then may I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve ordinance number twelve thirty-one, repealing and replacing chapter nine, article two, section nine dash seven of the City of Cortez regarding sales tax, or sales and use tax.
Set a public hearing.
Set a public hearing.
Let's set for public hearing.
Second.
Archibek.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Lucero.
Aye.
Shee.
Aye, thank you. All right, thanks, Kathy. All right, we have no other items of business at this time. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address council?
Again, my name is Richard Markham, 14680 Road 18 in Cortez. I need to apologize for getting carried away earlier. I did want to agree with the lady and gentleman about parking on Market Street. I didn't mean to go any further than that. However, now, I do want to bring up the problem of the median on Main Street. I realize that you've all made up your mind, you're going to do it no matter what anybody says. However, I think that outreach program to the merchants in Cortez is a good idea. Keep them informed what's going on and also get feedback from them. However, how about an outreach person, program for the people that are going to be parking on Main Street, are going to be shopping on Main Street, and just traveling through Main Street? You did have a public hearing back a few months ago. Nobody has heard any comments about what the results of these hearings were. Were they positive? Were they negative? Or were they just, nobody cares? You're doing a very poor job of informing the public of what you are doing. I have searched the internet. Back a few weeks ago, I found a sketch of one block of a median on Main Street. Gave no dimensions, didn't show really where anything was going. That's the only thing I've been able to find concerning the median project. The journal does publish occasionally comments about what is going on here at city council meetings, but they're not very thorough, they're not really informative. I have talked to not hundreds of people. I've talked to neighbors, I've talked to friends, I've talked to people in businesses when I've been waiting for service. One person says he had no opinion because the council is gonna make up their mind, and it doesn't matter what anybody says. One other person said, "Yeah, they didn't really know whether it was good or bad, we'll just have to wait and see." Everybody else was against it. They don't like the fact that you're going to narrow the streets. Right now, you're taking your life in your hands when you're getting out of a car from a parking space. There's just no room there. Have you ever been behind a tractor-trailer or one of these camping trailers that have their mirrors sticking out two feet on each side? They take up an entire lane. They might have an inch or two on each side of their vehicle, but that's it. When you go narrowing the lanes, you think thirty-three accidents in that area are a lot? You wait until you make it worse. It's gonna get a lot worse. And also, I would really like to get some information on your feedback from people that you have notified, people you've talked to. I haven't heard a detail.
Shane, let me ask, was there, and no notices were sent out to businesses for the public meetings. We held public meetings for a couple of weeks.
You have a what?
We held public meetings at the Sunflower Theater for how many, how many days was that?
Four different meetings.
And, I mean, I went to every one of those. We did, we did have some turnout for that. Was there anything posted on the city's website that these-
Nothing is posted on the community website.
I'm asking to see if anything was posted.
Well, I think we might have done news flash for the meetings. I agree with them, I don't think we have a set of plans on the website right now, but the method for these public meetings, we went door-to-door, let every business know, handed them the flyer, and we said it in the morning, just to kind of reference everybody's business hours to kind of work with them. And so, yeah, we had varying numbers of people coming to the meetings, and, you know, we didn't take minutes of those, sir. We just answered questions and, you know, put the plans up and made sure we had everybody's comments and concerns. So, but we didn't have minutes, so there's really nothing to put up from those. You know, we didn't have the clerk there, we were just having a conversation with the business community.
Did you and Phil go on the radio to-
We did.
So, it was on the radio, it was mentioned in the paper, and I agree, maybe having it on the website would be helpful.
I wouldn't say it's absolutely necessary. I never, I never turned on my radio. I haven't listened to the radio in years, so that's irrelevant. As far as the journal goes, I don't get every copy. I might get one out of three, okay? So, I'm left out of the loop. The only thing I have and what I really thought I could depend on was the internet, but like I say, there's nothing there to inform. You're gonna say you're going to have a public hearing, fine. Instead of just publishing it once and saying, "We're gonna have a public hearing, and that's the end of it," how about publishing it two or three weeks in advance, every week? How about putting it on the internet so that people can check?
Now, when you say the internet, are you talking social media like Facebook?
I'm sorry?
Are you talking social media like Facebook, or what are you, what are you referring to when you say, "Put it on the internet"? I mean, can you be more specific as to where on the internet you go to get information about, where you would go or expect to be able to go to get information about city?
I have looked at city council agendas, I have looked at planning, I have looked at everything I could think of, every, every category in the city council website. I have looked at other planning and zoning, like I say, okay? I talked to a gentleman a few months ago, pretty much when the median project just came up. He said that they didn't want to let out information because it wasn't finalized, and they didn't want people getting excited about it or upset because they could change it. Says, "Okay." Went back a few months later, the exact same speech. Went back again, the same speech, and then the next day I read that it's been approved.
Well, the same speech from who? Who did you talk to?
I can't remember his name. Younger fellow, but-
Because it's been on the agenda, it was on the agenda, and that's posted.
The thing is, I cannot get information, and I'm sure that I'm not the only one in the city. I'm sure there's many, many other people- I'm sure there's many, many other people.
The information that you're looking for is on the website.
I'm sorry?
That information is on the website.
Where?
In the agendas.
Didn't get the packets.
Yes, the packets are in, are.
Yes, and the websites on the agendas are approximately a month old.
No, the upcoming agendas are on there, aren't they, Shane?
One question I have, how many inches are we narrowing the lanes?
Well, in the downtown part, in downtown, I can't remember the streets, but, you know, after jogs, we're not narrowing at all.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, so, they're not like in the downtown area, they're not being narrowed.
Down there in that part, they don't get narrowed.
I'm sorry, again?
They do not get narrowed in the downtown part. The lanes stay the same size.
The same thing?
Yeah, in the downtown area, after the jog, and I can't remember the street where they kind of jog in, that's as narrow as it'll be. They're not being proposed to be narrowed at all, sir.
Well, I'm missing something, then.
Mr. Martin, if you'll go to the City of Cortez website, and all you have to, just type in "City of Cortez," and it'll give you the link to that. And if you'll look then, on the homepage, on the left-hand side, you'll, you'll see a link that says "Agendas and Minutes." And if you'll, if you'll touch on that, click on that, then it brings up, the September 26th agenda is on there. And it's on, it's on there ahead of, we get the packets for, for the city council meetings on Friday. So, I'm assuming that that's when those agendas are put on the website. So, if you will go on the city's website, the Friday before the city council meeting, the agenda will be there, and at that time, it includes tons of information. I mean, probably way more than what you want to.
And it'll stay there for a few days.
Actually, they're still on there, we've got agendas.
It's cataloged, it's there forever.
Yeah, we've got agendas way, way back to.
Yeah, well, the entire, the entire year of 2017 is current on there, and then it's also archived, so you can go back too, I think. I mean, yeah, to 2013, because we didn't, we weren't digital before then, so, we don't have, like, you can't find packets from 2010, 2010.
I'm old, I'm not a computer bee.
Right. And so, answer, I mean.
More diligent.
Well, I would just say to Mr. Martin's point, I mean, we should have something on there about an update on where we are with the median project. It's a good point. I apologize, sir, we should have something on there for that, keep everybody updated. So, I can work with staff and get something up. I mean, I, I, I respect your point, I think you're correct, and we can fix that.
But you are going to post when the public hearings will be?
For what?
The meetings have already been approved. That's, that's already been decided. And that was decided.
That's been decided.
When?
That has been decided without people knowing what public comment that is.
Well, but people have the opportunity to be, these meetings are open to the public, and you can come anytime.
You had, I believe it was four days in one week.
No, over two weeks, sir.
Pardon?
It was over two weeks, and that was our additional outreach, that didn't include the time in front of council.
I happened to be out of town during that time, but, okay, that was it.
No, sir, it wasn't.
How do I find out the results of that? How many people wanted it? How many people didn't? What I'm getting at is, are you people actually listening to the people?
Sir, you mentioned a lot of people that.
As far as I'm concerned, I was brought up to believe in a government of the people. It seems like, I'm really wondering how concerned you people are, as far as what the people want. Not just the merchants, the merchants are important. The people are just as important.
There's fifty seats in here, and most of these people are city staff, and we do listen to the feedback of people when they come to the meetings.
People that I have talked to are so disappointed because you don't listen.
Tell them to come to the meetings.
Are they coming to the meetings?
So, they just throw up their hands, and they say, "Screw it."
We had numerous meetings prior to us ever even approving the medians. We had a C dot access plan that was part of this whole process, that we had numerous ones of those. We had public meetings all over, we had them publicly.
And what are the results of these?
We had them publicly noted in, in the papers, we had every public place there was, we had boards up about it and everything like that. Those meetings were very lowly, they weren't attended by great amounts of people, and we really publicized those. So, we had all of those.
I challenge you to tell me which issue of the paper the results of these meetings are in.
Well, I, I, I think that it may not be in the form that you, it may not always appear in a form that you find most helpful. You can, at any time, call city staff, you can call city council members if you're interested in either expressing a concern, or finding out additional information, and you can come to these meetings anytime. I mean, I'm, I'm really pleased that you're here this evening, and sharing your concerns, but it requires people to come and be, and be present. And our meetings, our meetings are open meetings, and they're conducted.
I realize that.
In the, in the public, and that's when the decisions are made. And so, if people are really that concerned and interested, then they need to show up.
Yes, they do.
One thing, I did make quite an effort to talk to as many people as I could about the median project, and almost every one of them started off on a negative part when I actually showed them the drawings. Their complaints were just like the lane size. That's the same thing I heard over and over, was narrowing the lanes, and yet you open up the drawings, and the lanes are staying the same size. So, that was a rumor that kept going, but we, you know, I think it is important that we get that information out there. And I don't know, I don't know, other than, I was running around as many people as I could, showing them the drawing. Maybe the newspaper should.
Well, we'll try to do a better job of getting stuff on the website.
I think that's a good idea.
I think that, I think you have really shared a concern, that's a valid one, and that's something that we can certainly do a better job on. But I would encourage you to call your city council members. I hold, I hold hours every, every second and fourth Tuesday, and I'm willing to come down to city hall, or talk to anybody anytime that they want to, as, as I'm sure most of our city council people are. You've got city staff that is here from 7:30 in the morning until 5:30 in the evening, and their doors are open, and they're willing to sit down and talk. I think what happens a lot of times is that people hear a rumor. It's like the rumors with the medians. And they really don't know, they've just heard what a neighbor said, or who knows where it comes from, and they get all upset about something. But instead of going to the source where they can actually get factual information and find out what's going on, they don't do that. They're, they're busy with their jobs, or their families, or they just don't make the time. But, but if you're concerned, and if you're interested, and you really want your voice to be heard, then, as a citizen, you have to do your part too, and you've done it tonight. So, so, we thank you for your, for your input, and we will try to do a better job to.
Can I ask you a question? Okay. Now, the project has been approved, it's been delayed because nobody's been bidding on it.
Right. We'll go out for bid again in the first of the year.
Would a significant amount of public opinion against it make any difference from this point on? I mean, it's been decided. Is.
If we get a bunch, if we get a bunch of public opinion that is accurate to the actual project, I would say yes, we would listen to that.
I think it's decided, this is, it's been.
Well, I mean, if there's some major safety rule, or something that is actually a legitimate thing to be brought up about it, yeah, I think we should listen. But almost everybody that I talked to had the wrong information when they were objecting to it. So, I don't, I mean, it didn't change my mind, and didn't change my vote, that they thought the lanes were too small, because the lanes aren't changing size. So, that didn't, the fact that a bunch of people told me that the lanes were too small, didn't, will, will not change my vote on the issue, because the lanes aren't getting smaller.
And that's downtown, they, they, they are going to be narrowed when you get further east, but everybody points out the downtown and how narrow they are, and they shouldn't be narrower, and they're right, they won't get narrower. So, I just want to be.
But where they're getting narrowed, they're wider.
That's right.
So, they're not getting narrower than they are down there.
Mr. Martin, why didn't you, why didn't you make arrangements to come in sometime at your convenience? Sam Proffer is, is, and actually, that would be.
I think that Phil Johnson would be the best person to speak to you.
Mr. Johnson, who's the Director of Public Works, is located out at the Service Center. Do you know where that is, in the industrial park?
Yes.
Okay. You can, you can either email him, his email is on the city website, or you can.
Your Honor, let's just have Mr. Martin give the clerk his contact information, we'll have staff reach out to you tomorrow, the next day, and set up a time to sit down and walk you through the plan.
Would that, would that work? Would that work for you? It's a good first, it's a good first start.
But I think we should do a better job of.
Okay.
Putting things on the.
I'm going to be more diligent on the Internet.
Okay, and we'll try to do a better job, too.
I do occasionally get some back issues of the Journal on the Internet, so, I'll try to be more diligent.
Okay.
But personally, I think you're looking through a disaster on that meeting.
Okay. Well, maybe after you've talked with Mr. Johnson, you'll feel differently. Give him a chance to explain it, okay?
Thanks, Senator.
And thank you for coming in. City Attorney, no report.
Nothing, ma'am, nothing.
Mr. Hill?
Yes, Your Honor, I have two quick things. One is, I'm, police announced that we have hired Matt Kastner to be the new HR Director. He is currently Sergeant with the Police Department. Yeah, he interviewed, you know, we had six finalists for that job, some really qualified people, some really smart, dynamic people, and so, it was great to see him stand out among his peers, and I think he's going to be a fantastic person. So, he's going to start on October 23rd, and I don't think that Roy Lane is ever going to forgive me, and I'm at peace with that, you know, but he's, he's been an outstanding sergeant in the Police Department, and it's nice to see him move into a leadership position with the city from his current leadership position. And then, that's all of that.
Okay. Do we have any city council committee reports?
I'm Mesa Verde Country, Matt. On Tuesday, Kelly Kidmanen kind of presented everything that we kind of discussed in the meeting, so you pretty much heard everything during the work session. Karen did do a presentation to us on the rec center sales taxes extension, and the reduction from the 5.5 to the 3.5. We did some discussion on board members, and what we need to get our board members to attend, so we can have more of a quorum, because we only meet every other month, about six times a year, and for the most part, we're not getting a quorum, so it's making it very difficult for us to actually do anything. So, we did some discussion on what we need to do to get those other members to start attending. She talked about the podcast, she talked about the research, let's see, she talked about the 5280 magazine. We also had another little write-up in another magazine called Sunset Weekend Trip, that she didn't mention in that thing, too. So, we had two magazines. Really, I can go through all of this, but she really, really hit all of it. The one thing I want to say is, I really want people to notice what an excellent job Kelly has done for Mesa Verde Country. She has really stepped up, and has really got our percentages for tourism increased, and I really think that is, a lot of it's contributed to the work and efforts that Kelly and Candace have put in, and I just want to really acknowledge how well of a job Kelly has been doing with Mesa Verde Country.
She works really well with the other marketing people, and so, it's a good department.
Yeah, she works really well with, with everybody, and it's great to see her stepping up to this role, and really jumping on it and running with it, and she's done an excellent job.
Madam Mayor, thank you. We had a park and rec meeting on September 15th, and there was three items that were discussed. The first item was, we had, we have a member in our group, our Park and Rec Committee, Mike Levy. He attended a meeting in Durango that was about the Colorado Outdoor Stewardship Coalition, which was various groups that, you know, promoted outdoor pursuits, outdoor educational pursuits, and how they could work together, and he, he presented his, his, what happened at the meeting in Durango. And we also talked about the coexistence of horses and bikes at gear carpentry. The Montezuma County Sheriff's Department has a little stable down there at the, where they, where they're located, and they, they wanted to be able to, you know, they have three or four horses down there, and they want to be able to exercise those horses without taking them up to Boggy Draw or Longways Way. So, we came up with kind of a preliminary plan, where they could walk their horses on the out, the perimeter of the property, and stay off the trails, because the bikers, they, they don't like those trails being destroyed, or, you know, horses, when it gets muddy, they make holes. So, that's, that's what happened there, we had that presentation, and it ended up pretty good. And we also, third thing we talked about was some of the capital projects in the future in 2018, 2019, and some of the capital projects that we did in 2017. And that was Park and Rec's meeting.
Okay. Was there a Makedo meeting?
There wasn't Makedo, but Culture Center. And I wasn't able to actually make the meeting, because my schedule didn't work when I changed it. But by reading the emails, there is a lot of neat things happening down there, as far as the new displays, and the tours, and just a lot of great things. Unfortunately, I didn't make the meeting. But they're doing great.
Good, good, thanks. Okay. Any, any other?
No, I see it's at the beginning to the bottom.
Okay, okay. All right. All right, if there are no other committee meetings, we reported on the workshop, we had a presentation by Matt Keef offer on the school district bond issue. Kelly Kirkpatrick from Mesa Verde Country came and gave us just a kind of a overview of what she's been doing, and the successes that she's had, and asked for consideration for increasing her budget for the coming year. Phil Johnson provided some information on snowbird, water, trash bills, and how we might want to look at revising how those are handled. And Rick Smith gave us an update on the change orders for the fiber project. I just want to mention that this is National Banned Book Week, National Banned Books Week. You might be interested to, it started on the 24th, it runs all this week, it, it happens every year, it was started in 1982, because there was a, at that time, there was a surge in some books that were being challenged at public libraries. And you might be interested to know that such books as A Light in the Attic by Shel Silverstein, Little Women by Louisa May Alcott, A Wrinkle in Time, Snow White, To Kill a Mockingbird, those books were all considered to be banned books at one time, and, and the reasons vary, you know, obvious, the obvious reasons for banning a book.
Catcher in the Rye.
Catcher in the Rye was banned. On this year's list of banned books is a series of books that Bill Cosby wrote, and those primarily have been banned because of his bad behavior. So, it's, it's really interesting to see how, how, how things have changed over the year. The theme for this year is words are power, and that's very true, so.
So, why do you want to ban books? So why do you want to ban books?
Ban books, like banned, played banned.
Ban, banned books.
I'm sorry, I thought she said banned books.
That's what I thought at first, like drum...
Oh, banned, oh.
Yeah. I thought it was about a trombone.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to, since we're not going to meet before the Renew in Her Shoes pageant is on October 7th.
Which is a Saturday.
And if you guys have never been, I know Orley was in it last year, Karen drives last year. It is really, are you judging again?
I am judging again.
That's awesome, I'm hosting.
Oh, good.
So we're going to be there together.
Okay.
But it's a really great event, I would urge you all to come, it's a wonderful fundraiser, and Gary Noes could give any professional man who dresses like a woman a run for their money. He is coming back to defend his title.
Oh, is he? Well, okay.
He is. But we would love to see y'all there, we have two comics coming from Durango who are performing, Carrie Schneider's going to open up with some musical performances, and we have a lot of noted gentlemen from around the community who are going to be wearing dresses and performing talents for you. It's a lot of fun.
In high heels.
Yeah, we had a, we had a mountain biker in high heels last year who got bike tricks as his talent.
Yeah, it's a lot.
It was very cool.
It's a lot of fun, and I have, I really have to compliment the guys for being able to do this.
But yeah, Mary, Mary who runs it has tickets for sale at Renew, which is down just right below the hospital in those little buildings downhill, and you can get tickets, and I would urge you all to please come out and support Renew and the work they do in this community.
If you want tickets, just let me know.
Are you doing it again?
I'm going to be a judge.
Okay, good.
The rule was that letter one placed last year, come here again.
Oh, okay. But who's sitting again? Carrie?
Yeah, let's go on, honey.
Okay, well, is there anything else for the good of the city?
It's all good, let's go. You go, and you'll all be good.